His regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, July 16, 2024 in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecala, non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director Boston.
Here.
Director Morgan.
Here.
Senator Nathan.
Here.
Director Winkler.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org backslash Symbly. Item three is comments to the board. It is important for the school board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the board. The purpose of comments to the board is to give community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the school board about issues that fall within our authority. The board and superintendent do not respond directly to the speaker's comments during the meeting, but may follow up with the speaker if requested and appropriate. Persons who want to make comments to the board must fill out the online request to provide comments to the board form by 5:00 PM on the Monday before the school board meeting to sign up for a time slot. The form is available on the RPS website and on the Symbly main page. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the board. By participating in the public comment period, each speaker agrees to abide by this public comment procedure. Prohibited conduct during a school board meeting, should a speaker or meeting attendee display any of the prohibited conduct, the school board chair will call the person out of order. If the speaker or attendee persists in the conduct, they will be required to leave the meeting. Failure to abide by these rules could forfeit the speaker's right to participate in comments to the board at future meetings. Speakers, when your name is called, please come to this table. If you have written materials to the board, please provide them to the Assistant School Board Clerk prior to your remarks, and she will distribute them to board members. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. Please direct your remarks to the school board. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed right in front of me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Our first speaker tonight is Bob Werner. Our eighth speaker tonight is Jessie O'Driscoll. Our next item is 4.1, Information and Outreach, our 2024 Spring Athletics Recognition. This is an information item. Superintendent Pecal.
Thank you very much. I see.
You're out of order. We're taking no comments from the crowd. Thank you.
I see Brian Orky here, our Activities Director of John Marshall High School. I do not know that I see David Perkins from Century High School. Is he here? David is here as well. I want to invite you both to come on up. I know Jeff Whitney from Mayo High School is, I believe, in transit and on vacation. We board members are handling our recognition of athletes from spring sports somewhat differently because it is the dead of summer. As you know, the press of your agenda made it impossible to get visits from our athletes and coaches to the board meeting in May. And so, we have had Brian and our new Activities Director at Century High School, David Perkins, here to obviously not be as engaging as the young people themselves would be, but to give the board a brief overview of what happened in our, sorry, David, that's the way it is, to give the board a brief overview of what happened during our spring season. Of course, board members, you know Brian well, but David, you are brand new to Rochester. It's a really exciting board. We'll have much more chance to get to know you. But thanks for stopping by to give a recap of what happened in our spring season.
Outstanding. Thanks for having us here tonight. It's always a great honor to come out and get a chance to share the great things that we've got going in our school. So, I'm going to step in for Jeff. I looked for a green shirt, and I couldn't find one anywhere. So, I wore white.
Shock.
So, representing John Marshall and Mayo tonight. John Marshall had two state entrants for the state track meet, both distance runners. Abby Tree was a section champ at the 3,200 meter. She's a freshman. She went on to place eighth and won a medal at the state meet. Rai Mathis was a state entrant for us as a female in the 1,600 meter as well. So, that's JM. And now, for Mayo. I'm going to start with track first. Boys' state track participants at Mayo. Caleb Holcomb was seventh place in the 100 meters, fourth place in the 300 meter hurdles, and 16th place in the long jump. Sebastian Bari was eighth place in the 200 meter dash. Caleb Loomis was 11th place in the shot put. Lucas Peterson was 11th place in the pole vault. The four-by-100 meter relay from Mayo was a state runner-up. And on that team were Carter Holcomb again, Sebastian Bari, Logan Rathke, and Joseph Buglowski. Girls state participants for Mayo. Taylor Kurtz was fifth in the 200 meter dash and set a school record as a freshman. Jaden Lester was 10th in the high jump. Julie LeBrash competed at the state for the high jump but did not place. The Mayo boys golf team was seventh this spring. And boys tennis, the Mayo boys tennis team was a state runner-up. Daniel Munier and Caleb Kennel were the state doubles constellation champions. And Tej Bagra was a state champ for Rochester, for Mayo this year. And he's only a sophomore. And I creeped on him a little bit. I Googled him. So his state tournament, he only lost four games. He won 6-1, 6-1, 6-1, 6-0, and 6-1, 6-1. I might have had the semis. And he only lost four games, the whole state tournament. And he's only a sophomore, like I said, so both Century and Mayo. I'm sorry, both Century and JM will have to contend with him and the rest of the state coming up. So that's it for Mayo and JM.
Okay, I guess it comes over to me. We actually have a few of our great student athletes here. I don't know if this protocol or not. I'm new to this school board thing. The kids want to come to the front so people can kind of see these faces of our scholar athletes.
Come on over. Don't be shy.
Other thing I would like to do is kind of get some crowd participation with this as we support these kids. I'm going to try this. Y'all support me here. I'm the new guy. So just roll with me on this one. Want to do a little call and response as we start this out. So I'm going to say, can I get a recognition, y'all? And y'all say, recognize, okay? Can I get a recognition, y'all?
Recognize.
Can I get a recognition, y'all?
Recognize.
All right. Rochester Public Schools, along with Century High School, was proud to recognize some of our scholars that have achieved highly for the spring athletic season. For the girls in our 400 meters, we have Sophia Comfair, who ran a time of 55.9 at the state meet. Our four-by-200 meter team consisted of Megan Lund, Clara Gerhardt, Kaia Berry, and Sophia Comfair. And their time was 1 minute 42 seconds, .23 seconds. Our four-by-400 team also completed at the state meet. And that team was composed of Kaia Berry, Emma Anderson, Emily Bunce, and Sophia Comfair. Their time was 3 minutes 58.85 seconds. And for our boys, we have Sean Waisaki, who competed at the triple jump and had a distance jump of 46 feet 10 and 3/4 inches. And also in the long jump, Sean also qualified and had a long jump of 23 feet 10 inches. We also had Josh Kibefor compete in the 110 hurdles and had a time of 14.13 seconds. And then for our four-by-200 team, they took seventh. And that team was consisted of Jake Wills, Sean Waisaki, Max Elliott, and John Shannon. Our four-by-400 team took fifth at state. And that team consisted of Sean Waisaki, Jake Wills, Wyatt Lundstrom, and Gavin Vogel. And Gavin also competed at the Open for 100 in the state meet. And I'd probably say the greatest thing with all of these things is that both the girls and the boys both met the gold standard for academic all-state as well. And then also we had our -- last but certainly not least, our adaptive softball team had placed third place in the state tournament.
Would you mind sharing your names with us individually?
I'm Sophia Comfair.
I'm Megan Lund.
Kaia Berry.
Well, we are really glad to see you in the summer. And we are so glad that you came to join us tonight. Congratulations on your accomplishments. Please share our congratulations with all the students. And you've raised the bar, David, for our recognitions. I think we're going to be seeing something a little bit more peppy in the future. So welcome and thank you.
Can't challenge me. I'm sorry.
We hope you're having a great summer. And I just also want to say the activities director job is a tireless one. And so, David, you're beginning it. Brian, you are now our dean as Jeff is going to be going off into retirement. But really, these people work almost 24/7. So we thank you and we hope you're getting a little break this summer as well.
I got the lawn mower today.
All right.
Thank you.
Item 4.2, board member committee updates. Does any board member have updates from their committees to share?
I do. Director McLaughlin. Trying to multitask here. I have an update from the legislative committee on the 2024 legislative session. Specific to Rochester Public Schools, the legislature modified a statute that was a modification that was both proposed and supported by RPS to provide for availability of full appropriation for PTAC funding to RPS for the 2024-25 school year and decreasing amounts in subsequent years. There are now plans to propose legislation in the 25-26 session that would provide full funding for Rochester's PTAC for a longer period of time and also provide funding that would enable our district to launch the program. Other, I'm sorry, other districts to launch the program. RPS has also included funding for PTAC in the referendum proposal for sustaining the PTAC program. The other update that is specific to RPS is the legislature created a student attendance pilot program. And RPS will be part of this pilot program, receiving $670,000 to implement the pilot in the 24-25, 25-26, and 26-27 school years. So that's something to look forward to. There were also some other general provisions that impact school district functioning and funding. There were clarifications and changes to earn safe and sick time and paid family medical leave, the public employer insurance plan, paraprofessional training, and paid during school closures. There were some changes to school board elections, including voting on polling place locations and board member vacancies. And there was repurposing and adding flexibility to the REED Act funding, changing the funding formula to a per-student basis so that it's the same as the regular literacy aid. And I will put this update in, I'll send it to Ms. Sam to put it in our assembly. There is also more information in the MSBA 2024 legislative recap document that I will upload a copy of that document as well. And there's a link in what I will give to Ms. Sam.
Thank you. Board members, any other reports?
I'm with her.
Okay, you're with her. All right. Thank you. Items 5.1 through 5.11 are the consent agenda items. Would any board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Move approval. Second.
It has been moved and approved, it has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Item 6.1 is a focus topic, the 2023-2024 student behavior and discipline data update. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. And board members, I'd like to invite Jackie Peterson, our chief of schools, Dr. Peter Ruck, our research director, Chris Lingan, our director of school support, and Angie McAndrews, who is our new director of student engagement and school climate, to come on up to answer some board questions and run through some data. And if Ms. Sam, we could just bring up the first slide. I don't need the clicker, but just there's some text on that. I am, board members, I'm not going to read those bullet points to you, but I'm going to touch on a few of these before I turn it over to Dr. Ruck to move through a summary of our data. This is our annual report for you on something that I know is of great interest to this board and to our community, and that's the status of behavior and discipline in our schools. Every once in a while, you hear someone suggest that we perhaps don't take behavior and discipline seriously, or maybe don't act on it enough. The data that you have seen in preparation for this meeting and that Dr. Ruck is going to walk us through in a moment clearly shows that we take this very seriously and we are holding students accountable for behavior. That said, we all know you can't punish or consequence your way to safe, inclusive, and welcoming schools. And that's one reason why we've created a new position to lead the development of a new strategy that until recently, our principal at Kellogg Middle School, Angie McAndrews, will be leading, that really will be complementing the work that Chris Lingan has been doing ably with individual students and serious situations to look at the system piece of not only behavior but the related issue of attendances. Director McLaughlin just highlighted, we were fortunately selected to participate in a state pilot around that. The big picture for this work is belonging and that kids feel that they can be their best selves in our schools and that they can learn without disruption, that our staff can teach, and that there is that kind of community that we all strive for. The data we are going to look for, look at now is, as board members know well, per our student handbook, broken down into different categories. There are issues which you are not seeing data on that our teachers handle within their classrooms every day. And those are things that are often handled with relationships, with priorities, with incentives, with conversations in the classroom. When an issue goes beyond the classroom, we call it a level two. And there's a series of behaviors that you're going to see in the data here that we call level-two infractions. These are serious enough that they go beyond the classroom. In almost every case, an administrator would get involved. But they don't rise to the level of something that is a suspension, where we're removing a student from the learning environment, either in-school or in-out-of-school suspension. So as I was talking with this team this year about our data that we're about to summarize for you now, one thing that has occurred to me is in the three years that I've been here, which very importantly have started during the pandemic when our kids weren't even in school full-time, to now where we are very much, I think, I hope, moving fully beyond the pandemic, we focused a lot on level twos. And I don't mean to suggest that level twos are not important. And we've done a lot of work over the last two years to be sure that we are defining level twos in very clear, precise waves and applying those consequences for level twos equitively, regardless of a student's demographic background or other situations. That said, level twos are really a very site-specific type of behavioral incident. And so as you're going to see in this data, our sites are dealing with those types of behaviors in different ways, and I think that's appropriate. As you look at some of this data, it's important to keep in mind that because a type of level-two infraction goes up in a school, doesn't necessarily mean it's happening more that year than in previous years. It can mean the school decided to focus on it and hold more kids accountable for it. However, while level twos are and must remain part of our focus, the more I think about the future of our work improving student behavior, the more I think suspensions is where we need to focus. Suspensions are the behaviors that disrupt the learning environment for all students the most, and they're the ones that take students themselves out of the learning environment. So my goals, as board members know, which you are going to meet in closed session to begin to assess me on, included level twos this year and reducing level-two infractions, which you will see in a moment, we did not achieve, and did not include reducing suspensions, which we did. Now, I'm not trying to suggest we should shift that because I didn't do so good in the one. But it's the suspensions, I think, that are the most critical thing. And we saw that reflected in actions that our legislature took this year to limit the use of suspensions with our very youngest students. So it's important to look at level twos through the lens of a diverse set of behaviors that disrupt the learning environment, not all equally serious. And schools are dealing with them in different ways, though, as I said, I'm confident they're not dealing them with it in different ways based on race or gender, special education status, or other demographic markers. So that's point number one. Point number two is this year, for the first time, we are sharing with you and the community school-level data in this discipline presentation. We chose, for brevity's sake, to show the three highest schools for each infraction and the three lowest. And it is so critical, as we do this, not to suggest good school, bad school, or effective administrators, ineffective administrators. Each of our schools is extraordinarily different, but the school is the unit of improvement. You don't improve discipline across fifth grade all at one time. We approve it a school at a time. And as the data here will show and as board members are aware, there's no example of that that's better than Willow Creek Middle School, where we put in place a series of changes and the leadership team and the entire staff really came together around a positive vision of school climate and behavior and dramatically reduced disciplinary infractions over the course of two years. We need to learn from that. The board has heard about the work that Angie led at Kellogg around their CARES program. So the school is the unit of improvement rather than the district as a whole. But obviously, if we improve outcomes school by school, we will see the district-wide outcomes improve. But that's why we're going to be sharing that school-level data with you today. I've already touched on the importance of suspensions. That's the data that Dr. Ruck will end with. And then finally, while this is not a presentation on the new strategy that Angie McAndrews will be working with all of us to lead, it is very important to note that we're putting in place that strategy. And at its core, it's not identifying the misbehaviors. It's identifying the effective responses that change those behaviors. It's on the solution side. We know a lot of kids coming back from the pandemic have struggled to reacquaint themselves with long-established norms of behavior in school. That is a conclusive finding across very diverse schools in the United States. It's time now to turn from identifying the problem to identifying those solutions. And so that's one of the things that we're really excited to have Angie on board. And we'll be scheduling time for the board to learn more about that strategy as it unfolds. So, Madam Chair, with that background, I want to turn it over to Dr. Ruck. We have kept this presentation, while there's a lot of data in here, we've tried to keep it high level. And I know Peter is always adept at moving through it, but we want to also provide you with time to ask questions, not just of Peter, about the data, but of the rest of the folks on the causes and strategies that we're putting in place to address it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, board members. So if we have bar graphs, it must be Peter's turn. All right. So this is a new chart that has not been prior year data. This is the one that breaks it down by site, as Dr. Pecel mentioned. This is pretty typical for how we would see this type of breakdown district-wide. Our middle schools tend to be the places with most level twos. If you've met a middle school student, that's probably not surprising. And then it trickles down from there, leading the way at our middle. I know in the audience, some of these slides will be a little hard to see, but they are online, so you can follow along. This chart shows the relative frequency of various infraction types over time. There are a few dozen infraction types, fewer than there used to be. And so this chart combines several types into one category just for the simplicity of displaying the data. And as you can see, so those two, those three top areas have all grown over time and then trickling down from there. The main reason to show you this is not all of the bar charts are on the same scale later in the presentation. So make sure you pay attention to that scale because it matters. So first, we have interruption to the learning environment. Every one of these tables, or every one of these charts and tables can be relatively formatted the same. You're going to have a scale on the left and a count underneath. And then the bar charts are color-coded based upon the year. An increase in this area, as well as physical aggression, contact, and damage. Just stop me if I go too fast. Language violations. Our kids like blubbing a bit every now and then. So we have language on the increase. Fighting has decreased as we have gotten further from the pandemic. Just to give a bit of context, we have a lot of numbers going on on these screens. So what does 472 infractions actually represent? That's less than 2% of students overall. Technology, personal devices, one of the ones that has significantly increased as we have shifted our cellphone use policies in particular. You see a lot of those at the middle schools primarily, but they do show up elsewhere as well. Bullying has been essentially flat over time and has not changed. Threats and intimidation, again, it shows an increase. This is one where I'd encourage you to look at the table at the bottom of the screen as the numbers are much smaller than some of the earlier infraction types that we had. So while that green bar is quite a bit higher, again, we're looking at a different scale than we were before. Illegal conduct, drugs possession and use, similar sort of pattern over time. In 21-22, we had a fair amount of distance learning as well. Property damage, 101 and 101 was really surprising to me because two years never match up and people like me find stuff like that exciting. So we have 101, 62, and 101. So we have 101, 62, and 101. Assault, a similar pattern to the previous slide, or excuse me, a couple of slides ago. Alcohol, drugs, tobacco, and paraphernalia, which is a word I misspelled at least four times when typing the slide. And weapons. Again, a very small portion of our level twos, but not insignificant. Theft as well. Ending up with sexual assault and misconduct, decreasing over time with very low numbers on the scale anyway. Academic dishonesty has also decreased as compared to last year. One year does not make a trend, though, so this is sort of flying all over the place. We left this slide in specifically just to show that this is a code that's no longer in use. So the harassment code was used in 2122. It is now subsumed within some of the bullying codes. So this is a slide we'll remove, but since we have shown you this figure in the past, we didn't want to miss it. So now we're going to move into what schools are at the top, at the highest level of totals and the lowest level of totals for each of these types. The scale, again, is pretty important to keep in mind here. As you look at Dakota Middle School having quite a bit more than our elementary or high school on the same slide, but as you may recall from that first slide, our middle schools are cataloging these things very carefully. Interruption to school environment, this one I had to really play with scales because you've got a couple of really small ones. Physical aggression, contact, and damage, highest totals were at Jefferson, Dakota, and John Marshall. And the lowest, Montessori, Willow Creek for the middles, and ALC had zero. Language, highest totals at Jefferson, Dakota, and John Marshall. Jefferson is a good example, that slide actually, of a change in documentation. The school decided to focus on that this year, so that was an increase, not because the school saw that many more infractions, but because it was a focus of their team. With the lowest totals, we have Longfellow, Willow Creek yet again, and Minsync Online. So someone was getting crafty with online. Fighting, Sunset Terrace, Dakota, and Century at the highest totals in the last year. The lowest at Bishop, once again, Willow Creek with a substantial decrease over the last three years, and ALC with none. Here's our technology personal device that we saw before. No surprises here, given that we know that our middle school is really focused on this this year. Nine schools didn't record any technology infractions in the last three years, so I had nothing to put on the slide here. And I will turn over this content to...
OSS piece. A lot of times we get asked, what is OSS and what exactly makes it happen? We look at four things as far as what OSS is that we would suspend for. Possession or distribution of drugs or alcohol, which you saw on the slide before, a level twos. Possession of a weapon or incendiary device. A level-two offense resulting in bodily or emotional harm. Now, the first two are kind of cut and dry. You've got a weapon or you have drugs, alcohol. The next two are not as cut and dry, they're a little bit more intense. But a level-two result in bodily harm or emotional, bodily or emotional harm. And then finally, a substantial disruption to the learning environment. This is one that happens a lot of times. This is where we have disruptions within the school building as a whole. And you'll see this, and we see our suspension data a little later on, and where some of those will go in it, but you'll see substantial disruption to the learning environment in most of our pieces. So one thing that's come up is we've had a, I don't want to steal your thunder, it's coming up, we've had a decrease in suspensions. Why has there been a decrease in suspensions? Well, MDE has come up with some, with new legislation that we'd have to follow. And part of that is NED, or non-exclusionary discipline, which is an alternative to dismissal from school that requires NED to be followed, or non-exclusionary discipline, to be followed before we begin the dismissal process. So we are no longer able, I hate the word prohibition, but it's the word that they use in there, but it's, we no longer can suspend or dismiss K-3 students unless net has been exhausted or there's an ongoing safety threat. Now, what this doesn't say is that we still can send a K-3 student home for partial of the day. That's still an option, as long as they're not a special ed student. The last piece is something that we've always done, must have been some places in the state that did not do it, so that's why it was added in, but there needs to be a readmission plan that must include measures to improve the student behavior and attempts to obtain parental involvement within this readmission. Now, you can't say, you can't come back to school until your parents go and do the readmission plan. That's not, that's nowadays, we need to make reasonable attempts with that. But that plan is very important because how are we going to fix this behavior? That's the whole key. All the stuff that goes on, the level twos and suspensions, we need to have something to fix the behavior. And that's where this piece comes in that we're working with, and hopefully with Angie and some of the work that she's going to do, that hopefully we'll be able to fix some of that part of it, the readmission plan is key in this part.
So as Chris said, he stole my thunder, but suspensions did decrease a little bit between years, between last year and this year. Again, at 2122, we had a fair amount of distance learning. If you break it down by race and ethnicity, the distribution is largely unchanged. As you may recall from last year when we talked about this, I matched this up against the distribution of students who were committing infractions. And the infractions and the suspensions matched up. The two distributions were very, very similar, which is what you would hope to see match between the two. So that's our overtime. Again, you've still got your three color-coded years per race or ethnicity of the student. Schools with the greatest totals of suspensions, sorry, my scales got a little smaller on these slides, it looks like. Sunset Terrace had the highest total last year at elementary, Dakota for middle, and Century for high school, although some interesting differences in time there. And the schools with the lowest were Gibbs with only two, and that was in a previous year. Gibbs actually had zero this year. Kellogg at the middle school level, and only two suspensions at the ALC. In-school suspensions are on the upswing as an option that's utilized. As you can see, over time, that has increased at all schools. Schools with each of the highest levels of in-school suspensions would be Jefferson, again Dakota, and then John Marshall. With the lowest, Gage had the lowest in-school suspensions of our elementary schools because they also had zero last year. Willow Creek only had three in the prior year, and Century and Mayo did not use it. That would conclude the data portion of our presentation.
Board members? Director Marvin?
Um, Dr. Ruck, when, nice graphs, by the way. I know you love those bar graphs.
I do.
The numbers that were reported in all of them, those were the number of incidents, not the number of different students.
Correct. This is a count of infractions, so the modal response by far, kid has one or zero. The max was, I believe, 79. So it does, for one student. So it does vary, and students are counted more than once.
Not suspensions.
No, 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 just infractions.
Fractions.
Right.
Yeah.
Man, I'm sure you got that part.
Thank you. No, that's important. Thank you. And schools are aware of the, sort of the repeat offenders?
Oh, very much so.
Okay. Thank you.
And building on that, you gave us some information in our questions and answers about the overall number of students that were represented in this 5,987 level-two incidents, both in numbers and percent. Can you share that?
Sure. I would have some pull it. If you could just give me a moment to get that document cool better.
Yes, I think it's a good point, Director Marvin, that we recognize that our buildings are very focused on these, not the numbers of incidents, but on the students. And throughout the years, I think we've had this conversation about, you know, the administrators know which students have the one and which students have the 79, which have any level in between. So, but I think it's good for the community to understand that the population of students that we're really dealing with.
Absolutely. So I thank you for your patience to pull that up. So we have 8.4% of students in the entire school district who had any level-two infraction last year, which is 1,604 of our roughly 17,500 students. 1.44% of students received a suspension, or 274 kids. Or in-school suspension, excuse me. 3.6% of students received an out-of-school suspension, which is 686 kids. And then the other tidbit that I always run, I mentioned before about how some kids are represented many times in the information. If you take out of that 1,600 kids who have a level-two infraction last year, the top 50 of the 1,600 account for 25% of the level-twos district-wise. So the number is fairly concentrated in a smaller number of students at that higher
Maybe if I can, and this really is a question for Angie or Chris or Jackie, on this point that Chair Nathan raises of the kids who have multiple instances, how are we working with those kids? I know you can't generalize, but obviously, this is something I hear about in schools all the time. There's a subset of our kids who are struggling, and part of the strategy going forward is going to be figuring out what works. But you know, how, you know, whether for you from the district level, or Angie is someone who's a principal until a month ago, how do we think about those kids where it's multiple instances as opposed to a student who slips up once?
I would say, I mean, we have, our teams of teachers at Kellogg were meeting, I think, every other week, actually, no, weekly, to touch base on kids that seem to have some patterns of behavior. We try a variety of behavior interventions. We would work with families, use our counselors and social workers to get to the root of what kinds of things were happening, maybe outside of school that were having an impact in school. Sometimes it would require academic types of interventions because we'd see a lot of refusal or avoidance behavior and high levels of elopement for some students. So I think it would just be a matter of, you know, a variety of our staff members putting their heads together to try to identify what the, what the root cause of the behavior was. For some students, we would even do schedule changes. We've had kids that we've even tried a reduction in days to get just like a reboot, a reduction in periods in the day to get a fresh start. Can we be successful for four periods a day, then six periods a day, get them back to full time? So I think we put a variety of interventions in place to try to figure out what will get us to a more successful place for students. I think when we try a few interventions and they don't work, typically what would happen is we'd look at our referral process and see if there's a need for evaluation, if there are other things that maybe we could be providing outside of just tier-one support or tier-two support for students, and to see if there's a way to increase the level of support specialized to students that demonstrate consistent behavior disruptions.
So that critical piece of really going into investigation mode, like this, what's underneath, you know, and some people talk about behavior as a form of communication.
Right.
And that what, what is there? Because we know there's a persistent issue here, and so needing to really be in diagnostic mode before you're necessarily thinking about solutions?
Yeah, and I think our data does a good job of helping us, you know, identify who the students are that we need to be focusing on, but I think the expertise of the people in the building, and especially our staff that have relationships with kids, are what helped get us to resolutions that help students perform better. And like you mentioned, the belonging and that connectedness is a critical piece in order to help students turn it around.
One thing I'd like to point out, and we've talked about this in reports in the past, I can guarantee you, when we go to talk to an administrative team about their data, they know, it's not a surprise to them that they have a few kids that have more infractions. It's not a surprise, they know the student's story, which is what we can't tell here. But they'll, they'll be able to tell you, yes, they've had a change at home, yes, they've been struggling with up here. It's, we never run into where they had no idea, or they don't know the kid or know what's going on. And sometimes it's a matter of, we need to change up the supports that we have in place because they're kind of waning. But that's encouraging to me, that when we talk with building teams, they are very aware of their data and they're working to provide as much support as they can for that individual student.
Give you one little example. Back when I was at Jefferson, we had a, we didn't, our fifth graders ate lunch like at 12:45. This was how much we'd go in investigation mode to figure out how the student works. Didn't eat lunch till late, late in the day. Had terrible mornings. Mornings were awful, but not every morning. We couldn't figure out what triggered it. Wasn't classes, wasn't going to this class or that class? We had no idea. And finally, about the middle of the year, we realized, well, it's when, when he walks to school, he struggles, but when mom drops off, he seems to do better. Well, it's because he got there earlier, he had breakfast. And he don't eat lunch till 12:45. The poor kid was hungry by the time, when we got, when he came in, no matter what time it is, our SNS group was great, he ate breakfast. He came in at 9:15, 9:30, they still have breakfast ready for him, and all of a sudden, magically, things changed for him. So that's how investigative you have to get with some of these pieces. And invisible point, I thought, soon, not every kid got breakfast at 9:30, but with his plan, he did, or she did.
And not a problem you can suspend your way out of.
No.
Right.
Director K.
Yeah, thank you. So I guess I have a couple of questions. I wanted to start with the easy one. When I look at the charts, I think, I don't have to be real sophisticated to understand that with the one where the number of level-two referrals at Dakota is twice what the next closest was, and four of the top four are all of our middle schools, like what, what is the takeaway from that? What is our district-level understanding of that trend in the middle schools or in the variation between them? I just, any color you could provide on our thinking there?
I think that if you were to talk with the Dakota staff, they would tell you, because they came from all of our buildings together, joined together to form this new staff, they would tell you that the behavior they were seeing from students was not unlike behavior they would see in other buildings. They weren't seeing kids that were way out of control, but they're building, establishing their culture, establishing their expectations, and so the administrative team was really documenting everything. And so I think there's always a, we need to look at the individual school and what they're documenting compared to the other schools. And focus, like Dr. Pekel was talking about earlier, the school unit focusing on their data versus like, what are they recording compared to others? You saw the Kellogg data for personal devices was really high because of the way for the day that was being implemented, and they were recording those infractions as level-twos. We've had discussion about, should they be level-twos? We're teaching students about being responsible users of tech. Is that the same as if a student were to get into a fight? Do we really need to call it a level-two? But we had a situation at Dakota where we were trying to get a handle on the behavior and make sure that we were responding in a uniform way to behavior, and so I believe there's probably an over-representation because they were recording everything.
Angie, did you want to, since you were there?
I would say that, that was exactly what I was going to say, is that I think although we all kind of use the same tools, so for example, all the middle schools use PBIS rewards to document level-one and level-two behavior. Level-twos are all recorded in Skyward, and there's a general guideline in the handbook for what would be a level-one or level-two behavior. I think there are significant differences between how those processes work in our different middle schools. And Levi and I actually had good conversation about that because I think he had some, you know, thoughts about how they were recording at Dakota and how that compared to how we recorded in other buildings. So I think that's hard, even though we're using the same programs and the same general guidelines, I think that our practices look different. And again, like what kinds of things you're focusing on really have a significant impact there. So when I looked at our technology violations, I mean, we had like, I don't know, 400 level-twos, and we had spelled that out to families, and kids knew that, and our staff knew that, and our staff were doing exactly what they needed to do. But by design of the system that we put in place and what we were focusing on this last year, I knew, right, I mean, about the third day of school, I was like, oh my gosh, our level-two numbers are going to be off the charts this year. So, so I think that there are just some differences. So even though you would think level-two comparison would be apples to apples, it really isn't. And unless we are very systematic about how we do that across buildings, I think sometimes it's a little difficult to put side-by-side comparisons in place.
At the same time, I think we need to get that in check because from my experience, processing a level-two, making phone calls to parents, making sure there's like plans in place, it's time-intensive. So if your, if your focus is on recording and documenting everything, sometimes you're chasing... chasing your tail and not spending your time on on the the actual like work of being proactive. So I think with Angie's position, we can help buildings see like, how do you, what's an efficient way? How do we acknowledge the behavior, respond to the behavior, but not spend all of our time in our computers documenting and causing so much work that we can't get to the proactive part of things?
If I if I might, I want to keep us on track, and I know there's other business tonight. Early adolescence is a time of physiologic heightened sensitivity to risk. Young adolescents are getting an increased dopamine shot to their brains from pushing the boundaries. That is developmentally normal. And, you know, and Robert Putnam, who's a political scientist at Harvard, has a wonderful analogy of as affluent kids or kids in advantaged, maybe not rich, but advantaged situations encounter that heightened sensitivity to risk-taking, society puts, oh, my God, in your car, when you have a crash, you airbags, society puts airbags around them to protect them from that. Kids who live in poverty and do not have those circumstances, as they have that natural adolescent pressing toward risk, do not have those, and there's no airbags. It's a profound issue. If you read his book, Our Kids, it's it's a, it's an extraordinary study of that. There is, in our district, a brewing discussion about middle-school redesign, about fundamentally rethinking the structure of middle school. This would have to be a major lift of a next strategic plan. This is not something you do, but as as middle-school teachers and principals as I've talked to, we have almost no choice for middle-school kids of choosing to study what they want. We have no extracurriculars in our middle schools. We're not unique in the country in being in that circumstance, and the middle schools made some big changes last year, partly for financial budget cuts reasons in some classes. But as we look at some of this data, there's always the quality of the educational experience that we have to be thinking about, and are we creating environments that are developmentally attuned to early adolescents who are by nature pressing and forming identities and those kinds of things? So that's just one of those issues that is a long-term possibility, and what we've said to school leaders and teachers and others is, we we hear you, we see this data. I will also tell you, without citing the source, we have some encouraging coming academic news about our middle schools, some very encouraging academic news. So there are some some challenges and some good things that are happening, and that middle grade is very deserving of this kind of focus.
That's a good seg to my second question, and that's that's my last one on this topic. But I I spend a lot of my non-school board day job hours in the measurement field, and one of the things that comes up constantly is is the the maxim that not everything that measures can be mattered, and not every, or everything that can be measured matters, and not everything that matters can be measured. And it's a a really good, the point you just raised, Superintendent, I think is a really good underscoring of that idea, because what, the reason that we spend time on this isn't because we want to see a particular trend in the bar charts, as nice as that is to see and reassuring as that might be. What we're chasing is a culture that is conducive to deeper learning, and that is a really tough thing to put onto a chart, and it's not even clear what the independent variable would be that you put. But the the point is, that's a combination of a whole bunch of clinical skills that our school-level leaders and and classroom-level teachers need to have fidelity with with using on how to perform a behavioral intervention, as well as, you know, building that sense of belonging that allows students to be vulnerable in the first place, as well as all of the different supports we try to wrap our around our students. But I guess what I struggle with as a board member, reviewing this data is important, I'm glad we do it on a regular cadence, I think that's important for a whole bunch of reasons, but what are the investments that we should be considering? What are the next steps in pursuing a culture that is conducive to deeper learning? If there's anything in that category that you think the board should be keeping its mind on, or making sure we continue to prioritize, or whatever, just love to hear about that.
I mean, I would say from my perspective as a building leader, exactly what we have outlined in the skip. I mean, those are the things that will lead us to better connection and engagement for kids. So the being able to identify students who are having, that have unmet mental health needs that are in our school, finding ways that we can expand the understanding of our staff of what deeper learning actually looks like in a classroom, and how can we take restorative practices and put it in place in our schools and in our classrooms to help build those relationships back? I think that I've seen, I've seen pretty average teachers get kids to do pretty outstanding things when the relationship's in place, and I think that that the restorative piece of that is something that's magical that happens for teachers that don't have training, they just have good connections with kids, and they're able to, you know, talk with kids about their behavior, have good reflective practice with them, and get them more engaged. So I think, I mean, without without being, without it being too broad a brush, really, what the skip plan has in place right now are the things that are going to help get our kids there.
Director Barlow?
Thank you. It's Andrew McAndrews. My question did actually deal with correlation between skip and our discipline data, and you kind of brought that together. But are they in different cycles, if you will? We're presenting the discipline data now. When you have the retreats at the building level, is this information readily available? And are they, do they utilize this to factor into their skip plans?
Yes, and part of this with the restorative piece, remember, we didn't have every site didn't do the restore, wasn't part of the skip or restore, remember that part? So there's certain buildings that focused on on restorative practices within their skip plans, so like, we had nine of them. So this year would be kind of a baseline year for them when they use some of the restorative practice pieces.
Okay, and really, the reason for that particular question, and I do have three, was to point back to the new position you're in, and where you'll have opportunity to perhaps assist individual buildings to help overcome, address the student needs that may be in existence. So I look forward to what you'll be able to accomplish. Second, the infraction, infraction type specifically sexual assault, misconduct, and weapons, I always kind of wondered, so are these the type of referrals that occur to Rochester Police Department? Or is there any correlation between, or data that we could maybe look to see, oh, well, we have the numbers in terms of sexual assaults and weapons, but of that number, how many were referred, do you know?
I don't have that information, but sexual assaults would be, sexual misconduct may not be. Weapons, yes, would be. If a kid brings a pocket knife, the first grader forgot a pocket knife, it may not be reported to the police, it may just go with the administrator and the teacher. But if we've got a weapon, yes, it's going to go that way. I think you had another one I missed. Did you say drugs also?
No.
Well, I just want to say, Director Barlow, largely prompted by your previous questions, this past year, when you considered renewal of the School Resource Officer contract, we did match that data for the first time, and I was pleased that it it did match up, that if it was an assault, it showed up in the RPD data as assault. But until you pushed us on that, for instance, the infractions that didn't merit involving an SRO were in our aggregate data, and so in our first pass at it last year, our data for essentially potentially criminal actions, which are different than discipline, disciplinable actions, did match up with RPD's records, but we, as I told you when you reviewed that, we will make that an annual exercise. And your point about the timing of this is actually critical. In Dr. Ruck's department, they have begun planning for the next generation of our school improvement process, which needs to be much more front-loaded with data analysis and then school-setting priorities with district support. We're we're much better than than we were. I mean, every school has a very clear skip before the start of the school year now, and it's known. We want to front-load a needs assessment that is much more rigorous starting next year so that there is that kind of data digging at the site level with district support before they're setting those priorities. Because you're right, it's hard to remember from July what you're talking about when you're setting up your skip in March. So we need to keep pushing on the timelines.
Yeah, and timelines are a big part of what we're working on on the redesign as well, just to make sure that it's all aligned in terms of when data products are released, when we look at them on our cycle, and also budget. So we're trying to make all those pieces fit together in the in a revamped timeline for skip.
Okay, and then final question, deals with slide thirty-four. Or I'm sorry, yeah, thirty-four, I should probably get there myself then. And out-of-school suspensions, I raised ethnicity, what, and it may be difficult because it may have a lot to do with what school, these things merit out-of-school suspension, but what can be done, or what is being being done? We we see disproportionate representation. I'm looking primarily at the category black, if you will, and I can, you know, twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. While there are, there are, there are decreases in play, what things are occurring that has resulted in decreases, and ultimately, if there are a goal, Director Cook, it's more than just presenting information, but what's the desired goal in effect? Deeper learning, most definitely. So how can we, we know if they're not in school, they're not learning. So, and I I would be surprised, though not really, if you guys were able to say, well, what we're doing is this or that. But I would like to at least be reassured that this is on the radar, so to speak, in terms of the awareness associated with disproportionality and a intentionality of practice and policy. I I see that intentionality clearly in Procedure 413A, and I'm curious, it would be nice to see a similar intentionality as it may relate to issues such as this. Thank you.
Sir?
I will just say, that's the best summary of the reason for this new position and this new strategy that I've heard yet. It's being proactive and not reactive on precisely this issue.
I could also offer a glimpse. So when we probably, I think it was maybe partway through third quarter, we had to discontinue using our our alternative to suspension program at Kellogg because we had no more security periods, like, we just did not have the staff capacity to be able to maintain it, which was a huge disappointment. And and then in the latter part of the year, of course, we saw significant increases in suspensions. But prior to that point, I think that the level of, the level of students re-offending was considerably lower for students of color especially. I think because in our care program, they spent two days working intensely with a social worker and/or a counselor and administrators to make sure that they had adults who were connecting with them and offering considerable amount of time to reflect on behavior and think about not just what the behavior looks like in school, but the impact of it on other other people around them, their family, their teachers, their classmates. And in many cases, when it was appropriate, restoring those relationships. And I think it is, it's night and day different when a kid comes out of a two-day program like that, having had really, really intensive reflection on the behavior, they learn instead of going home for a day and coming back. So I think any opportunity we have to restore and repair relationships and give students support in reflecting on the behavior is a win for for all kids, but particularly our students of color who, you know, I just think that we have not had the time that we've needed to dig into those behaviors, and then we see kids have, you know, repeat offenses over and over, and that has been, it was challenging that to have that program in the second part of the year because we saw such good results of it in the first part.
Thank you.
Director Rickman?
So I I appreciated the observation from Dr. Ruck that if you've been around middle school students, you kind of get this, I think we all do. What was particularly encouraging to me is to see that those levels have significantly decreased at the high school level. So I'm wondering how this ties together, I think I know the answer, with all of the social, emotional learning that we're focusing on, starting in elementary school? Because there are a lot of kids who come to school who are very dysregulated, and before they can learn, they have to learn how to control themselves and to control others. So if if my reaction is, well, this is hypothetical, so if I decided that I didn't like something that Dr. Pikel said at the board table, if I were truly a hundred percent dysregulated, my first reaction might be to just clobber him. But at my age, fortunately, I've gotten that under control, you know, so you you see that. But then you also see kids who are experiencing that kind of reaction in the home situation where that is the first response from the parents. So I'm wondering, how can we further involve parents in helping their students to become more regulated so that our incidents continue to go down? So you, Mr. Ling, and you gave the a wonderful anecdote about the kid without breakfast, and I thought that was probably where you were going.
Exactly with, when we talked, Angie talked about having a prescription for those students, you know, and all those things that we do. Part of that is the parents, some of that investigation is the parents. If you don't have the parents, things are going on within the home, and how
Exactly.
they are able to help with some of those things, so then that gives us some of those tools, and vice versa. We give them some of the tools that they're able to help at the same time. But the parents become a key role in this. If you don't have the parent, it makes it more difficult.
So is there any disaggregation of the data between the kinds of events that occur at school because of something that happened at school versus something that kid brought from the outside into the school day? So if they come in with, okay, I just had this horrible thing happen on social media that generates outside of school, they bring that into the school, and of course, you know, you have to deal with it. But in terms of how many of these incidents are caused by in-school provocations versus something they brought in from the outside, maybe that's not really
It's going to be a great answer, a lot.
You know, and and like, like Director Cook mentioned a minute ago, you know, some things you can't, it's it's difficult to measure.
We think, I mean, if you talk to our principals, I would say they think that are fighting things that happen because of something that happened outside. Social media or something happened within the community, and it comes into our school.
So
I wouldn't say all of them, but I would say that's a
Well, and I would say our, the lack of access to phones during the day is probably a very good indicator of why our number of fights dropped over the last year, too, because there was not that, there wasn't the provoking it happening during the school hour. So, I mean, I haven't looked at date, like, the day of the week data, but I would imagine, I mean, I would say we had more conflicts happening with kids on Mondays and Tuesdays than we did other days during the week, I think, because a lot of stuff got drummed up over the weekend, and our social workers and counselors could help try to settle it down. But, yeah, I mean, I think that that, that's fair to say.
That's part of the relationship piece when kids come in, and schools are able, the counselors or the social workers or the the principal administrative team, the SROs, whomever, can help with some of that piece within that. That's part of what the goal is within that, to try and stop some of those things from happening. And that's part of that relationship piece that we talked, that sense of belonging piece that we've talked of.
And that part of the legislation was that we needed to have, we needed to ensure that kids are having reentry meetings and they're coming back from suspensions, and those connections with families are just invaluable use of our time.
So I I think from my perspective, it would be fair to say that this really is a community effort, that it can't be the schools alone that fix problems because it's widespread, and there are so many variables that are brought into it that we all have to work really well together. And I appreciate the work that you all are doing in helping us to understand what's happening in our schools and, you know, how we can base further decisions on this kind of information. So, thank you.
Director McLaughlin?
I want to go back to something Dr. Pikel said at the beginning, when you talked about we didn't succeed with the goal of reducing level-twos, is that what?
It was one of my goals for the year, so.
Do you feel, though, that the other things you talked about, the level-twos being better defined and more equitably distributed, is that part of the success?
Yeah.
Can you measure it that way, rather than measuring it by numbers?
We're measuring, I think it's not the solution to the point Director Barlow raises about disparities, but at least I'm confident we're measuring accurately, but that doesn't get the data headed in the right direction. So yes, I think we've done a lot over the last two years in this space, but but we So, yes, I think we've done a lot over the last two years in this space, but, but we, we have to start, we have to, we have to have what happened at Willow Creek happening at more schools. And it is, but that was a particularly dramatic turnaround, so it's, it's possible to, to highlight that. And it was, it was, it was a result of many of the things we've been talking about here. And we've already highlighted the good work at Kellogg and other schools too.
I do have one question kind of about that experience at Willow Creek, that when I was hearing about that happening at the time, I was worried it was going to carry over into likely Mayo, given the geography of where it's at. It seems like you didn't see that. Can you help us under, is there any rhyme or reason to that?
I think the best definition I've ever, I've ever heard from about, of culture is the way we do things here. And school culture matters tremendously, or school climate is the title we used, term we used in Angie's. The norms get established, and kids are wildly sophisticated norm readers. And at Willow Creek, we collectively lost control of positive learning norms. And so, what that staff did, and I was just walking out of a meeting last night with a teacher at another middle school, and we were talking about this, that staff got on the same page, and leadership played a key role with clear and unflinching enforcement of positive behavioral expectations. And it took a number of months, but the kids, and you could talk to them, they'd say, wait, they're, they're all doing it now. The consequence was the same, and it was followed through. And teachers, during the most difficult year at Willow Creek, that staff was split. Some were like, I want to be in the halls and be a part of it, and some were, I'm closing my door, teach, and I understood both instincts. And the only way to create that culture is to be on the exact same page around these kinds of issues. You cannot leave it to the administrators to do. Administrators have an indispensable role to play. But I know, I mean, I was a high school teacher, there's a certain, I have enough to do in my classroom, all of that is the administrator's job. It doesn't work that way. You, you know, you, you got to give to get, and there's that strategy. So, I would say it was structures and processes, but it was also about hitting the culture. And so, yes, when they went, one of the things, I will say, their Mayo High School has many, many challenges, every school does. One of the things that Mayo has going really well for it right now, and I credit the whole school community, is culture. They have a very positive cohesive culture in that high school right now. So, I think your, your perception is accurate, and it's because when you got to Mayo High School in ninth grade, even if you had come from a school where there weren't those positive systems in place, you had to flip the switch. Now, what we want is the positive systems in middle school that feed up into high school, but you're right, there, there could have been that, and I think by, we certainly don't see that in the data. And doing things like having a day in our high schools where just the ninth graders come before the big kids are there, it's an investment. I struggled with that a little bit because that's a day of learning lost, but boy, is it proving worth it to addressing things like that.
And I kind of want to go back to the equitable piece too. I know that Director Barlow asked that question, but one of the things that, and I apologize for not thinking of this before the meeting, it just kind of came to me as we've been talking about this, but would it be helpful to see the in-school suspension data broken down by race and ethnicity as well, to see, to show the differences between
I could certainly do that.
And maybe for next year.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. I did, in my creating nine billion charts and then picking the ones to use, I did do that, and the, I don't recall it being a member, but I would have to, to update that for next year for sure.
Okay. And then I just have to dig into one thing, Mr. Ling, and I think this is going to be for you, and I always ask these kind of questions. I didn't realize I could make my slides bigger and then I could read things until I got here. But one of the questions, I have to go back to those, that bigger slide you pointed out for us. What is the difference between illegal conduct, drugs possession use, and alcohol, drugs, tobacco paraphernalia? Those seem similar to me. Are they, or what's?
Very similar. We have, we have lots of things that are very similar that maybe at one site they're calling this. We spent a lot of, because there's no longer a vaping piece within there. Remember, remember DERS, we talked about that before, DERS, that's one thing. They were like, where do we put vaping? Do we put it under illegal drugs? Do we put it under tobacco? Do we put it under, you know, other, I'm not, I'm losing my train of thought on the other piece we could put in there. We had a long conversation with our high schools of where should we put this, and they're all putting it in different spots. And it was probably January, February before, we were like, wait a second, we need all be kind of the same on where these are going. So, yes, the codes can be very similar and can be used in different spots, there's different ideas.
So, are the titles on the graph then, are those DERS or are those RPS specific?
DERS were RPS.
Okay.
Yeah, we take everything from DERS, because that's where we report our
You told us that last time, yeah. Would it make sense then that that's something that needs to be better defined than moving forward as to which of these categories we're going to use to be consistent with that? Okay.
There's little things that come up, like, wait, what are you guys calling it? And we're not calling it the same thing you are.
Okay. That would be helpful, I think, to look at this over time, to make, to understand that and to know what's in those categories and that we're being consistent with across the buildings. Oh, and I did have one more question, I think this is for you, Angie. Can you give us just an example, you've talked about their readmission plans, can you give us an example of a typical one, what types of things would be in something like that?
Sure, we actually, Craig Schneider, one of the assistant principals at Kellogg, actually made a checklist of, a list of non-exclusionary discipline types of things that we had maybe attempted before we sent a student home, so we could review those pieces with a parent to say, here are all the things that we've attempted before we sent your child home. And then what we talked about specifically are, who are your trusted adults in the building? What was the precipitating factor of the events that took place? You know, where are you going to turn for support going forward? And then making sure, on the backside of our form, the specific things we would always ask, what do you need for support? And list those things out, and then agreement between parent and student. And then they would sign the agreement, and we'd send a copy home with them. I think it's kind of a formality, but I think that it was good, I think parents understood the seriousness of it, going through a process like that. And I think we had much greater participation in reentry meetings this year than we have in the past. And then for our students at Kellogg who were participating in the care program, parents were invited to their exit meetings where they would share, you know, a slide presentation where they would share the reflection on their behavior and their plans going forward also. So, those weren't reentry meetings, but they were invited to their exit meeting where our counselor, social worker, admin, and impacted staff would be able to attend.
Awesome, thank you.
I'm not sure how universal, but in my experience, I would always take time to make sure that the student understood that doesn't need, that behavior doesn't define who they are. And when I see them, I don't think, you're the person that did this. I think of you as one of my students, one of my kids, so that, that there's, they're not left with a feeling of, I'm, I'm less than now, or you think poorly of me, but that we all make mistakes, and now we start again.
Thank you.
I want to go back to the out-of-school suspensions disaggregated data by race and ethnicity. I mean, we look at this chart every year, and I appreciate Director Barlow raising the, the directionality of where we'd like to see this data go. And given that it's going to be a focus in the future, and we've looked at this data different ways, we looked at it by school, we, is there a different, and we're, this chart is going to have to appear every year, but is there additional data or a different way to share with us what's, sort of to get to Director Barlow's question, what's working and what's not working in terms of number of students, location of students, age of students even, when we think of our presentations in the future? Because I think the numbers, I don't know that there were, suddenly one year going to go to zero. We can't expect that. But I think we really have to start telling the story of all the work that you're doing in the buildings and, and what we're seeing move the numbers as they change from year to year, if that makes any sense.
Can I jump from this? Jump from the suggestion, maybe breaking this down for us by elementary, middle, high school, so that we can see that more detail and see what, if it makes any difference in what these graphs look like.
Yeah, let's, let me just commit to put that in our plans for next year and thinking about it. One of the things, we are, in the near future, going to launch a data dashboard on our website that will provide aggregate data on key measures of student performance and other things. We also have built the capacity of school staff to dig into our data using a platform called EdgeClimber, and maybe we need to bring dashboards to the board meeting as well, so that actually it's not just the slides that we happen to show you, but it could be the findings that board members identify in digging into some of that data that shaped some of the discussion. Because of course, there's only so many slices of the data that we can, we can provide. But I think, yeah, at minimum, looking at it elementary, middle, and high school, because there are profound developmental and structural differences between those levels. And certainly, to your point, Chair Nathan, finding ways to bring to the board and the community what we are doing to address those disparities is, is really essential. The tension with suspensions is there was a period where no one was suspending around the country because we don't want to suspend. You don't want to take that tool from an administrator if a kid is disrupting the learning environment. We want to change the behavior that is leading to the need to suspend. So, that's why I'm thinking more and more suspensions are a very important focus of our work going forward. They've always been a focus, but I, I, there was a school of policing for a long time that was called the broken windows school, and if you, if you, if you police broken windows, murder rates will go down. And I think to some extent, there's, there's some in the criminal justice world that has questioned the correctness of that theory. I think there may have been some notion that in reducing level twos, the suspensions, which again are the most disruptive misbehaviors that occur in a school environment, would also go down. I think suspensions often are not the product of a bunch of level twos. They're a serious incident that happens in and of itself that we need to focus on, and to the point that Angie made, go into diagnostic mode and find out what the behavior's telling us.
Anything else, board members? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Our next item is seven point one, Prep for Action. Approval of the 2025-26 district calendar. This is a prep for action item that we'll take action on at our next meeting, so President Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I want to ask Carl Bakken, who has done a yeoman's job of facilitating this, give a very brief overview of what's in the calendar. And as he comes up to join us, I want to thank both the Rochester Education Association and the Rochester Principals Association for their partnership again this year in designing this calendar. They are invaluable in helping us make the math work, and you have the results of that before you.
Thank you, Dr. Pecel. Good evening, board members. I'm here to present the 25-26 calendar, school calendar for your review. What you see in Board docs is the proposed 25-26 calendar is very similar to recent calendars. It is typical over the last few years that the school year start the last week of August and end in the first week in June. I did a little review of that, except for 22-23, since 2021, we have used that option of starting before Labor Day. We sought input from teachers and principals as we developed this calendar for 25-26. And just some of the highlights there, back to school week will be that August 18th, 2025. It's hard, hard to talk in 25-26 terms right now, I guess I got to get used to that. Like we've done the last couple of years, August 25th and 26th would be step into learning days at the elementary school. August 25th would also be meet me in the middle for sixth grade and orientation for ninth grade. August 26th would be the first day for secondary students. August 27th would be the first day for elementary students. Last day of school will be June 3rd. 25-26 would be the second year that the entire district would be on the semester schedule. And with that, we have some days that are called curriculum adjustment days for teaching staff that are, would be scheduled for the 24th of September, November 4th, March 3rd, and May 6th. These days would be approximately 50% professional development, approximately 50% for teachers to review data and make adjustments to their instruction, instructional plans. And these would replace those end of quarter trimester workdays under previous calendars. There would be, still be an end of the semester workday and an end of the school year workday for teachers on 6/4/24. And then our professional development day for all staff would be February 16th, 2026. With that, I'll see if there are any questions.
Well, if there are no questions, I want to extend my gratitude to the team for doing this. We heard from parents a number of years ago that the more advanced planning we can give them, because vacations are almost being selected a year ahead of time. So, the fact that we'll be able to provide this to parents by the beginning of August, the year before the school year is, we're very grateful for the ability to do that. So, thank you. Any other questions, board members? All right, we'll be back for action on August 6th. Our next prep for action item is the first briefing of policies and procedures recommended to the board by the policy committee from our May through July meetings. And we have some recommendations to read. Yeah, we have 10 items to brief tonight. I'll start. Employee Assistance Policy 417.1R is a Rochester Public Schools policy only. Other large districts do not have a separate policy for employee assistance, so the policy committee recommends that this policy be retired. The policy committee recommends the changes in tutoring, Policy 423.1R, which clarify the circumstances under which teachers may tutor students, including restrictions on tutoring their current students and the steps teachers must take in notifying the building administrator that they are providing tutoring services on their own time without using school district resources. This is also another policy that was developed in Rochester Public Schools.
Procedure 701A, Establishment and Adoption of the School District Budget, has minor language adjustments. For clarity and precision, terms are updated to reflect current use. The policy committee recommends these changes. The policy committee recommends a few minor language changes to Procedure 701.1A, modifications of the school district budget. This procedure is a broad timeline for updating, analyzing, and the reporting of annual revenue and expenditure budgets.
Procedure 704A, Development and Maintenance of an Inventory of Fixed Assets and a Fixed Asset Account System, is updated in the sections on Definitions and Storage Ship and Accountability. An extensive description on tracking items that are purchased with federal funds is added. The previous outdated section about tracking and accounting is deleted. Items included in district inventory include the removal of outdated technology equipment, and district equipment currently in use was added. The policy committee recommends these changes. For Policy 707.1R, there are a few minor changes, bus contractor duties and responsibilities. These changes include the duration of the contract and requires a process to elicit as many bids as possible when a transportation contract is expiring. The policy committee recommends these changes.
The policy committee recommends two minor language changes in Policy 740.1R, Indemnification of District and Employees Against Legal Action. This is also a Rochester Public Schools only policy. Debt Management, Policy 750.1R, is a Rochester Public Schools policy only, and titles are edited to reflect current leadership titles. The policy committee recommends these updates.
For Procedure 750.1RA, Debt Management, it's a companion to Policy 750.1R and is part of the three-year review process. The policy committee recommends the updates to current leadership titles. There is one small MSBA edit to Policy 807, Health and Safety Policy, which changes the abbreviation used to refer to Minnesota statutes. The policy committee recommends this MSBA edit.
Thank you, policy committee members. We will revisit this for a second briefing at the August 6th meeting. Before we move into the action items on our agenda, board members, would you like to continue or take a recess prior to diving into that section of the agenda? No?
Let's go.
Okay, we'll move on. Action item eight point one is Approval of the 2024-25 Student Handbook. This is an action item, but I believe we have a brief presentation.
Extraordinarily brief.
So, we'll have that before we introduce the resolution.
You can just tell Jackie. You can tell I'm sending subtle messages.
There are really two changes I would just highlight, and the first is, on page 77, we have a, a change to the FERPA, an update to the FERPA statement, which really addresses what the school district uses to constitute a school official and what constitutes a legitimate educational interest. And those are referring to the parents, the parent right to request written permission for, for personally identifiable information when we're sharing. And then page 24, we put a very enticing placeholder for the upcoming cell phone strategies or policy practices that we're planning to put in place. You'll be seeing those August 6th, but I can tell you that today, we built consensus with the high school on how they will address cell phones. We're going to present that to Dr. Pecel in a very, in a We're going to present that to Dr. Pecal in the, in a very, uh, in a few weeks, I think it is, and, um, very excited. Uh, we just, tomorrow, we'll be working with middle school principals, and you know middle school principals. That's going to be a lift to get, um, consensus, but, uh, just kidding.
That was a better cliffhanger than Who Shot JR. That was.
It'll be fine. Those are the, those are the two changes that I'd highlight.
Given that, I'm going to read the resolution, and then we can have discussion. Um, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the 2024-25 Student Handbook, with the provision that policies referenced within, which are currently under review by the Policy Committee, will be updated in the handbook upon approval of the policies by the School Board, and the section of the School Board Handbook regarding student use of cellphones during the school day will be updated upon final recommendation of a standard district practice is made to and approved by the superintendent and approved by the School Board prior to the start of the 2024-25 school year. Need a motion? Move approval? Second. Moved and seconded, discussion.
Director Mark.
Thank you. Two very quick questions. First one is, when this is sent to students and to, uh, families, will it be translatable?
Yes. It, it is electronic, and there's a way to translate.
Okay. And then the second one is that the expectation is that students and parents sign the form at the end, if, and then turn it in, that they've, they've read it, they've looked at it. Um, if they don't turn it in, my assumption is that ignorance is not an excuse. I mean, if they say, I didn't know it was a rule, that whether they turn it in or not, they're still.
I think that's a fair assessment.
Okay, thank you.
So, if I may, then, um, how will families slash students be made aware of the existence of?
The, the schools will highlight the handbook with the student body, um, typically at the high school by grade level in a, in a school assembly. We might also highlight, uh, really important sections of the handbook in advisories and , um, small group, um, sessions. And of course, elementary will get a little different, uh, flavor than high school. We would make that, um, age appropriate, but we will make sure the students all hear, um, the, the, um, highlights of the handbook, and then with parents, when we, um, do newsletters and, um, and any kind of, uh, bulletin or any kind of, um, social outreach, we would include that link for parents.
And Director Barlow, I think Communications has always also agreed that once we approve it, they'll add the handbook to the back-to-school page on our website. So, it'll be part of the toolkit that parents get. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been approved. Our next action item is Approval of a Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Plan. I will read the resolution and ask for a motion and second, and if received, we can have discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan for the school year 2025-2026. Move approval?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions to discuss? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been approved. Our next, uh, our next action item is the Amplify Science Curriculum Quote. Um, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the purchase of the Amplify Science Curriculum for grades kindergarten through five in the total amount of $841,251.60 in a multi-year order extending until summer 2031.
Move approval?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The resolution has been approved. Thank you, Board members. Our next agenda item is the Policy Committee Recommendations on Procedure 413A: Supporting Transgender and/or Gender Expansive Students. This is an action item. I will read the resolution, ask for a motion and second, and then we can continue with, uh, discussion on the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 accept the recommendations of the Policy Comis, Committee as listed for Procedure 413A: Supporting Transgender and Gender Expansive Students. Move approval?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Uh, and now is our time to ask questions and discussion. But before we start, I'd just like to ground us again with, um, some of the, how we got here. So, um, just to remind everybody, the Superintendent issued the administrative guidelines in September of 2023, and when those guidelines were issued, um, it was stated that the School Board would wait on a final rule from, um, the Department of Education on Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 before we considered making a policy or procedure related to this topic. On April 19th of 2024, that final rule was issued, and on May 2nd, the Policy Committee met to discuss the general direction of the process and decided to move forward with drafting a procedure. On May 7th, at the School Board meeting, I announced during Board Committee reports that the procedure was under development and would be discussed at the June 11th study session and the July 16th regular meeting. On May 29th, the Policy Committee met to review a draft of the procedure and recommended presenting the draft to the Board for consideration. On June 7th, the draft procedure was available to the public for review. On June 11th, the Board reviewed the draft procedure at the study session. On June 25th, the Policy Committee met again on June 25th to review and update the draft. The Policy Committee recommended presenting the updated draft to the Board for approval. That draft was available to the public for review on July 12th, and we are here tonight with an action item on Procedure 413A. Board members, any questions, comments, or discussion? Director Garcia.
Yeah, it's minor comments. Um, and I say these things as a queer woman of color, so I, I recognize the intersectionality, the importance of, um, what we're doing and with this procedure. I also speak as a psychologist. I also speak as a School Board member and somebody who, um, has deep passion for our district. Um, I appreciate the birth and the iterations of this procedure. Um, I can hold that while it's not exactly a perfect document, I recognize that it is a living document that can go live today, and it can be updated as needed. Um, and I trust, or am trust that I am still nitpicking the procedure and driving the chair to the edge, um, as a member of the Policy Committee. And I also want to make clear what happens when kids do not have the safe and inclusive space to be. Um, in, in my professional work outside of this, I receive a lot of, uh, what I would call a DBT referral, so referrals for children who come to me for, um, dialectical behavior therapy. And I recognize that also because of the nature of my work, this may be a little bit inflated, but I would say nearly 100% of the children that I, that are referred to me for that particular service are part of the LGBTQIA2+ uh, community. And most often, they're coming to me because they are living in or subjected to one or more invalidating environments. And it is almost immediate that some level of the symptomology or, um, some of the, the suicidality in particular reduces once they're in services and are able to have somebody sort of affirm who they are. Um, and I want to quell the fears that, that, of people who are concerned about this, that private providers are just making impulsive recommendations to engage children in life-changing gender-affirming care without consulting with other medical professionals, without their family, that it's like some sort, you know, shrouded in secrecy, that those, those things are not happening. Um, that for those of us who do this work, there's much assessment involved, and we are asking lots of questions. We are receiving lots of documentations, uh, lots of documentation, and we are having conversations, sometimes even with school district professionals. Um, and even when I am a, a therapist or a provider for a child, yes, there are times where I will tell the parent, you know, you gotta, you gotta trust in me just a little bit, because if your kid thinks I'm going to turn around and tell you everything you tell me in therapy, there's almost no reason for them to be here because they're not going to trust. And I would say most parents are like, you do what you gotta do, you're a professional, just let me know when I need to get involved. And I tell the kid, this is what I may have to end up telling your parent, um, or when there are things that are concerning that aren't necessarily a mandated reporter issue, but that maybe mom and dad need to know. Um, we talk about what's going to happen when those things need to be shared, and I would like to believe, having had conversations with our educators, that they are also in that same space, um, that it is not like they're going to be taking information from students and, again, shrouding that in secrecy and not sharing information with parents that they are legally allowed to have access to. And so I think that there are a lot of assumptions about what this procedure means or what it will, what will happen if it is, um, put in place, or if my colleagues vote, um, to implement it this evening. Um, I also want to just remind a lot of our community members that your emotions are not fact, and just because you are afraid of this thing doesn't mean that it's bad for children, um, and just because you are uncomfortable does not mean you or your children are unsafe. Um, so I appreciate those who came and had all the courage, especially Ash, if you're still here, um, to speak with us, and I appreciate those of you who are willing to take a stand for our gender expansive transgender students, because it also sends a message to our trans staff and their parents, or parents in the district. So, for us to be able to show that this is who we are, I think it also goes a long way with, um, recruitment and retention for people who want to be here. I know we had somebody speak about, uh, pending mass exodus. I don't think that that is the case. Um, I have had people personally reach out to me from other states who are trying to come here where there are legislation either already enacted or about to be voted on where they feel like this is a, a refuge state for them, and that they want their kids to come to this district because of the things that they're hearing about us in even places like Colorado. So, I am proud of what we're doing. Again, I know that this is an imperfect document, and I am committed to making sure that it is consistently and continuously updated to reflect what, what we need to do, and I think it's also helpful to our staff to have something concrete, uh, to lean on when they have questions about where to go with this. So, I would like to vote, um, in the affirmative for this procedure for our district.
Director Marvin.
I don't have nearly the, um, the expertise that, that Dr. Garcia does, who's a psychologist, but as a, as a longtime educator, um, I'm hoping it's clear to the community and to the staff is that this policy does not encourage students to be trans. What it says is, you'll, you'll be safe here. We'll do what we can do to make sure that, like every other student, you have the right to be in this place. That's it. That's it. We will not, it, it's, it's like during the women's suffrage movement. That's a poor analogy, but during the women's suffrage movement, and women were demanding their rights. They weren't encouraging people to become women. They were just saying, we deserve to be here, and we deserve to be treated with respect. That's what this policy does. We, we protect many different classes of kids in our schools, and I, I'm concerned that if we say no to trans kids, who's going to be the next group that we say no to? To say, well, there aren't very many of you, so we really don't want to bother. Every single child should be respected and welcomed in this school district, and that's what this policy does.
Director Workman.
I guess it looks like we're kind of going down the line here. Um, Dr. Garcia, thank you so much for your lengthy explanation of the work that you do, its importance, and how we can help students here in Rochester Public Schools. I think it can be extremely traumatic, from, uh, my own experience, to have a child who is not welcomed at school for whatever reason, or is made fun of, or taunted, or any other thing like that. It's really, really hard, but when that student has supportive adults at school, it makes the parent's job so much easier. It really helps to know that the school is going to support our kids like parents want them supported. So, um, Dr. Marvin, thank you for your perspective as a former teacher. I appreciate that.
Right back at you.
Director McCall.
I'll go next.
You go next.
Um, so, in thinking about this and, and reading all the input that we've gotten from our community, it prompted me to think about some things that Dr. Pecal said earlier about, um, the only way that students can be successful is if they feel a sense of belonging at their schools. And I take that to heart in terms of safety, inclusiveness, and being welcoming. Those are the cornerstones of our district and of this board, that we may have different views about various things, but that is a core principle of why we're here. One of the reasons that I got involved in this community and in the School Board is to ensure the safety of students. And I firmly believe that this policy is a safe for students, it's best for students, families, and the community. In reading some of the information that we received, um, in both Board comments and in, um, things that were either sent in public comments or sent to us by email, it, and just some general reading in the, about the nature of our society and our community these days, it gets me to think about the, and this kind of goes back to, you know, similar to what Dr. Marvin was saying about how our society has changed in terms of women's rights, but thinking back to around the time period of 1965 in our history, that, moving forward from the time of 1965, there was more recognition in our community of basic human rights and basic civil rights. I firmly believe that those changes in our society were critical to our communities thriving and, um, working together rather than working apart. And I equate these, this policy, this procedure that we're looking at as providing those basic human rights and civil rights to all students. It also, from my work perspective, like Dr. Garcia, it also follows the law and our Constitution. In my perspective, this procedure is critical to the inclusiveness that we want to see in our district. Um, I also want to give the perspective, I was the meeting greeter tonight and was out in the hallway looking at the, um, there's a, um, art presentation out there about the seven grandfather teachings. It's from the Native American culture. And the message that I got from that, critical to tonight's discussion, is the following. It said, "Love like a river will cut a new path whenever it meets an obstacle." That just really resonated with me, that I want the community to understand that, that regardless of what your views are, what your religion is, what your moral values are, we can all have differences about that. But that message, I think, speaks to families who are in, in a crisis or facing an obstacle on this topic, that there is a path forward, and I think that's important to keep in perspective here. I am very much, um, planning to vote in favor of this procedure.
Director Barlow.
It's, um, I appreciate the phone calls and questions of, uh, concerned parents, educators, and champions of the Rochester Public Schools regarding Procedure 413A. The stated purpose of this procedure is to ensure that all students are welcomed, valued, included, and respected, to help schools ensure safe learning environments, are free of discrimination, harassment, and bullying, and to promote education on social integration of transgender and/or gender expansive students. I believe the purpose is a noble and appropriate, um, purpose. My concern, however, goes beyond the, the purpose and, uh, comes in the form of, uh, the important role that parents play. Uh, for anyone to suggest that, uh, parents are not foundational, uh, to the success of, uh, a child's well-being, uh, not every parent is a good parent. Uh, I believe most are, uh, and, uh, I don't think we should, uh, uh, demean the important role of what it is to be a parent, or to suggest that parents do not have the capacity or the that parents do not have the capacity, or the wherewithal, the love, and/or the willingness to support their children across the board. The one or two times I was suspended from school for level-two offenses, my dad would always say, as he would discipline me, "Son, I do this because I love you." And I think sometimes we don't fully understand the role and the shape and the form that love takes. And so to that end, what I've come to realize is that parents and champions of our district desire to be heard, and their opinions to be valued and actively considered. For parents to believe that they actually know what's best for their kids versus we know what's best for their kids. And so in light of that, I would like to offer... Now, I do support the policy, but with the following two amendments. I do recognize that while I can propose an amendment without a second, it fails. But my first amendment would be in reference to Section 4B. I would like to see that replaced in its entirety with the following language. Parents, guardians will be notified when or if their child who is under the age of 18 either asks to use a name pronoun, a name pronoun change, restroom or locker room because a child begins to believe that they're either transgender or gender expansive. This amendment varies from the current language. And for those that are familiar with Section 4B, you can see the differences.
All right. Director Barlow, can you be a little slower in reading that language, please?
Sure. Parents, guardians will be notified when or if their child who is under the age of 18 either asked to use...
Hold on. Parents, guardians will be notified...
When or if...
When or if their child who is under the age of 18...
Either asked to use a name, pronoun, restroom, or locker room because a child begins to believe they're either transgender or gender expansive.
Restroom or locker room because they believe?
Well, the language of our policies think and/or believe that they're either transgender or gender expansive.
Okay, we're going to take... You said you had two. We're going to take them one at a time.
Right, right.
All right, I want to make sure that the board members... Are you making a motion to amend the policy committee recommendation to change the language in Section 4B?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so I'm going to read so everybody knows what the motion is before I ask for a second. Parents, guardians will be notified when or if their child who is under the age of 18 either asked to use a name pronoun restroom or locker room because they believe they are either transgender or gender expansive? Did I get it right?
Think or believe.
Think or believe?
Okay, well, actually, as I... If we look at the actual proposal...
Yep.
All I'm asking to see changed is, rather than if a parent or guardian request... I'm actually... The gist of this amendment is that parents should be notified.
So it sounds like you want to change the language, too. Parents, guardians will be notified about their child who is under the age of 18, including information about whether their child identifies as transgender, gender expansive, or whether their child has asked to use a name pronoun restrooms or locker rooms based on the child's gender identity rather than their legal name or sex assigned at birth, period.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. So that is the motion to change that language. Do we have a second? Okay, so that motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay. And then 5B, if I may.
Okay.
That section currently reads, "In order for a student to be addressed by the preferred name and pronouns that reflect the student's gender expression by members of the school community, parent guarding consent is not required." And what I'd like to propose as an amendment is, parent guarding consent is required.
Okay, so remove the word "not."
Right.
So that is a motion to change the policy committee recommendation by changing the language in Section 5B to delete the word "not." That's your motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, is there a second?
I just want to be clear, there's multiple "nots."
Okay, sorry.
So we want to make sure we have the right "nots."
Yes. Our lawyer. So it will read, "In order for a student to be addressed by the preferred name and pronouns that reflect the student's gender expression by members of the school community, parent guarding consent is not required. A court ordered name change or official gender change is not required, and the student is likewise not required to change the school's official records or the school's student information system."
Yeah, the only "not" I'm referencing is that in regards to parent or guardian consent.
Okay. So that is the motion. Do we have a second?
A second for the sake of discussion.
Okay, so we have a second for the sake of discussion. Director Barlow, you made the motions, so you can discuss.
Sure, for me, this is more than just a point of discussion. It is a point of concern, especially as we, as a district, speak of parent partnerships. I think this policy and the exclusion of parents runs contrary to the messaging that we market ourselves by. And if truly we are endeavoring to engage in significant parental involvement and parental support, then parents should certainly be at the forefront of being with those trusted adults. And I struggle with the belief that anyone can be more trusted than a mom or dad. And maybe I come from the point of view of my own life experience. I realize we all have different life experiences. I know some people have not experienced the blessings of family as I have, or to be blessed to be a father of six kids and 20 grandchildren, and I see the importance of parenting and will always stand in support of, alongside of, and take one for the parents who I believe are crucial to what we as a district are seeing, we're endeavoring to do for our students through the schools and through the budgets that we approve. And that really is the rationale behind this amendment.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Director Barlow. I'm going to leave the discussion of your amendment, obviously, appropriately to board members. I do appreciate your highlighting our commitment to family engagement. And I feel it's urgent to note that there's nothing in this procedure that prohibits a staff member from talking to a parent. And there is the unambiguous requirement that a parent inquiring about their child must be given all information we possess, which, as I know you know, some have criticized both the guidelines I wrote and this draft for. So you are urging in a way that I certainly respect, a different type of family engagement, but there is no prohibition of information for parents anywhere in this, and there is a mandatory providing of information to parents that request.
And further, Madam Chair, while that is true and the language is only permissive if indeed a parent happens to catch wind of and/or somehow becomes aware of and it's conditioned upon when they inquire if the staff member at that particular moment in time, say 3:03 PM on this particular day, whether they know it or not, but at 3:05 they later come into knowledge of it, but are under no obligation to inform the parent because they didn't have the knowledge at the time of the initial request. And so I'm simply suggesting parents should not be out of the loophole. And I accept also the reality that my view is not necessarily a shared view of my peers. I believe we all have the same concern for our communities. Without needing to justify the reason or rationale, I personally, and many people who look like me, have benefited from necessary legislation being passed from the Civil Rights Act of '64 to the Voting Rights Act of '67, or to the Fair Housing Act of '68. And I mean, there are... I understand the value benefit necessity. But to that same thing, I believe it is necessary, it is a benefit to always include our parents, to never, if you will, make them have to find out through whatever means they happen to find out. I think just as the school will call or skyward... Parental notifications occur when our students skip school, when they're suspended from school, when they get sick at school. No problem, there's no fear that exists on the part of individuals that parents are going to... Parents might be inconvenienced when they're maybe asked to come pick their kid up from school, but I think we just have to give our parents more credit than what some may be suggesting. And again, I'm not naive to think that there are individual parents who may go to the extreme of overreacting to the information. I'm not discounting that or being dismissive of that. But I just strongly believe that we shouldn't... We should empower parents rather than require them to ask the right question at the right time. That's my final comment.
The thing that you're suggesting, though, is that, you know, the school include the parents when academic progress is being impeded. The kid is sick, the kid did something they were supposed to, they're not showing up to class. We are removing a barrier for students to access the education that they would like simply by saying that, "We will do this thing by calling you the name that you're asking for, by the pronouns that you're asking for, so that you can show up to class." Because not everybody has parents that will understand those things. Not everybody maybe even recognizes where they fall on this, like, gender expansive continuum. So it's not a, "Let's keep the parents out of the loop, or let's not share with them important information about their kid," because they are allowed to know. And if an educator shares that information, it's not like they're going to get in trouble for that necessarily in any particular way. It's... We are not requiring the student to have different levels of approval by people outside of themselves when they're asking for a thing. So nobody asked my grandmother, her parents, whether it was okay for them to start calling her Helen instead of Maria Elena. Nobody asked my grandparents if it was okay that people start calling my father Henry instead of Enrique. Both of them were okay with that decision when it happened. It did not impede their academic process at the time or progress, and everyone continued. And so every time my father went home, he was Enrique. When he was at school, he was Henry. And so there are a lot of kids that do that, even if they're not trans or gender expansive. They show up here and put on a person that they know that they can be or accepted in school. And so all we're doing is protecting that ability. And if the parents are asking for the information, they're allowed to have it. But it's not requiring me as the educator to turn around and be like, "Oh, my gosh, Jeannie, did you know that your kid is now asking me to call them..." Excuse me, X, Y, or Z. It's not putting the onus on me as the educator to over-involve myself in that situation. And they are able to have that information should it be asked of them, and if their kid asks of them. And I can say also, as a mental health provider, sometimes I'll have kids come in and tell me when I'm doing an assessment, "This is the name and these are my pronouns," but I don't want my parents to understand, and I have to explain to them, "Your parents will have access to these documents, and so if I write in here that your name is this on your insurance, but you are asking to be called this and these are your pronouns, how would you like me to handle a conversation with them when they ask me, 'Why did you do this?'" And then we have a conversation about that. So again, that's not me trying to tell the kid, like, "We're going to snow your parents." It's me being very clear with them, like, "These are the expectations of me, and these are the things that your parents are allowed to have access to. How should we manage this?" That's what this is.
Director Marvin?
You know, I think a narrative has developed that somehow the school board wants to get between the relationship of a child and their parents, that we want to do the parenting. And I don't think that could be farther from the truth. The reality is that most staff don't have expertise in this area. And what they can do is say, "Here's the nickname you want, I can do that." That's it. That's it. We don't say, "And you need to get medication, and you..." We don't give advice, we don't push.
It's not their role.
And I don't know this for a fact, but it's been my experience that when a student provides a staff member some information that's really important to them, the first question the staff person asks is, "Have you talked to your folks about this? You know, this seems really important to you. Have you talked to your family?" Now, if that kid says, "No," I think the next question is, "Do you want to? Do you think it would be good?" And then if the kid says, "No," that's going to put that staff person in the position of, "I've had this young person come in and say, 'I can't talk to my mom or dad about this, or at least I don't want to right now.'" Then it's my job to do that? And as Dr. Garcia said, you know, we see all the time, especially in secondary kids, students trying on different personas, trying on different ways of being. And as they grow, they change, and eventually they land on, "This is who I authentically am." But it seems to me it's not our business as staff people to get between that kid and the relationship with their parents.
Director Workman?
I think it's a very personal decision that kids and families make. Schools don't about who you are.
Director Workman?
Director Barlow, I think you touched on something that's really important to emphasize is that we all have different life experiences. And just because a person has grown up with a family where their parents are nurturing and wonderful, and the child feels that they can go and talk to them about whatever is on their mind, is great. But in my years of teaching and having been on the board for a while, I realized that not all parents and all students share those same life experiences. So if a parent gets a whiff of something, why would they go to the staff member first? Wouldn't they ask their child, "I just heard something at school," and it doesn't even have to be about this. "I just heard that there was a problem in your classroom. Would you like to talk to me about it?" And if the kid says, "I don't know, I'm going to get in trouble," I mean, there's an opening right there to discuss it. an opening right there to discuss it. But if the child says, "No," okay, you let it go at least for a while. So I think I would love to be able to make it possible that all parents were opening and accepting and supportive of their kids in these kinds of situations without immediately throwing them out of the house or jumping to some awful conclusion about their kid, is that's just not the reality of life today. It's just not. And I don't know how we could possibly make all parents, you know, to be as open to their kids as their kids would like them to be. But, I mean, I also know that, you know, there are times when, I was growing up, and I think, yeah, I was really glad my parents didn't know about that at the time because I didn't know what was going to happen as a result, while it was not something that was necessarily super life-changing, but that it was important to recognize that kids do have different thoughts, different things from their parents, that are sometimes more easily discussed with a mental health professional. That's probably the wrong word for you, Dr. Garcia, I know, in your profession, where they feel that because that person isn't as close to them as their parent, that they have some freedom to explore some of these questions with that person. And as Dr. Marvin said, you know, the first thing that a staff member is likely to say to a kid is, "Hey, this is a big deal. Have you talked to your parents about this? You know, this seems like, I don't think we can handle this here," because we can't. And if the child then says, "I'd really like to, but I don't know how," then there can be a discussion with the child with somebody else who is capable of guiding them in the "how," versus if I say this to my parents, "I know how my parents feel. They will hate me forever." And so if the child does not have a space at school where they feel safe, they're not going to be able to accomplish academically what they need to. And I think we are talking about a very small percentage of students, but we are here to educate and keep all of our students safe. I'm also not a proponent of saying, "I want to withhold information from a parent." If the parent comes and asks me, as a former teacher, you know, "Is this occurring?", my first response would be, "What has your child said to you about this? What kind of discussion have you had at home?" And I don't think I'm equipped necessarily to have this discussion here and now with the kid. I mean, there are so many possibilities, but this procedure, I think, helps to clarify what the staff has to do or not do, that the staff does have the ability to discuss with the parent using their best judgment, but that they are not required to. And frankly, if a teacher has to keep track of every single student, of what they said every single minute as to, "Gosh, did I call the parent and talk to them about this?", there wouldn't be any teaching going on whatsoever. So I realize that this was very long-winded, and I apologize for that.
Director McLaughlin?
Director Barlow, I appreciate your emphasis on our parents and our families, that I think that's important. And I firmly believe that this policy acknowledges that. And what I want you to know from my life experience, primarily from the work that I did in the past, is that there are great, great parent-child relationships in our community, but there are a lot of them that parents and children do not have good relationships. And I think about that a lot in thinking about this policy, because I think that's the reality. You know, it'd be wonderful if all parents and children had perfect relationships, but as we know, and, you know, we talk about in various forms here, they don't. And I think a lot about those kids and how they struggle. And I put that in the perspective of this procedure, and also what Dr. Garcia was talking about, that in this particular issue, there's a lot of flexibility in people thinking over a period of time. It's not just, "You wake up one day, and you're going to be this way." It's fluid across time and across gender expression. But what I'm concerned about, and I think this ties into what Dr. Marvin was saying and Director Workman as well, is that I think what, it's taking out one word, but I think it really flips this whole procedure on its head, because I'm kind of thinking about some of the letters we've received, too, is that taking that word out then puts that staff member or counselor, whoever it is, into that parent-child relationship. And what we're hearing is, the parents don't want the school in their parent-child relationship, but if you take that word out, that's what's happening, is that it would, there's a parent-child relationship that isn't great at the time, and taking that word out would require the school to get into that relationship when it's not invited by either parent or child. And I don't see how that could be good, or safe, or inclusive, or welcoming to either, to any of those three entities, the parent, the child, or the staff, that I think it's just, it's one word, but I think it really flips this around into a place where I don't think any of those, or anyone, would want to be.
Director Cook?
Director Barlow, I continue to appreciate your perspective and the clarity with which you bring both your, the concerns that are formed by your life experience and from our broader community. I have given these particular provisions quite a bit of thought, and primarily from the perspective of a parent. And I just do not see the conflict in the current draft language and in any way engaging parents. I routinely receive dozens of messages through Skylark and Talking Points between my four kids spread across next year, three different schools, about lots and lots of things that in the discretion and at the initiative of individual school staff are things that my wife and I might want to know about, because we might want to follow up on. And I have every confidence that putting a student's gender expansive or transgendered identity status in that same category of information will not in any way harm the ability of our schools to involve our student, or our parents and our students' families. What I, when I consider the implications of this policy, what I think about is what it does to our school culture from the perspective of students. And I think that most parents with concerns about the potential stigmatization or marginalization of their students, their children, who are transgendered or gender expansive, think quite a bit about what that moment is like on the first day of school when their child might be expressing a gender expression that is different than what it has been in the past, or indicating a preference for a use of pronouns that is an immensely vulnerable and sensitive time for them. And so I think about the implications of our policy on what happens in that moment to a child that's just like my child, or to a child that I've coached on soccer teams and baseball teams, and I want to be, I want them to feel validated, valued, like they belong there. And if the next question is, "Well, we need to have a call home," or, "I'm going to have to talk to your parents about that," or, "Oh, we can't do that because that's going to require that, you know, we have a little meeting and," which would be different than any other type of information, I just, I just think that's not what we want for our kids. And as a, I think that our parents with those concerns would not want that for their children. But I do think that in nearly all cases, our parents know their children much better than our school staff. They just do. And they will, under this policy, explicitly have every piece of information that school staff has access to, to the extent that there's something that they want to investigate or collaborate on further. I do think that that's the right way to strike the balance. I am very grateful for your perspective, and thank you.
Director Barlow, if I may, I also appreciate your focus on parents, but I really think there has been a misinterpretation of the power of parents as it comes to this procedure. At any time, for whatever reason, a parent can pick up the phone and call their teacher and ask whether their child has been asked to be referred to by name and pronoun that doesn't identify with their gender identity, or if there is any behavior related to gender identity that they are expressing. There is no barrier to that phone call being made by a parent, maybe just because a child decides to wear a different color than they normally wear. I mean, it could be, they ate a different breakfast. It could be whatever indicates to a parent they make that phone call. If they're primarily concerned about this, they could literally call their teacher every day, even with no indication. If it's something that's that important to them to know the minute that it happens, they can establish that line of communication with teacher. There is no barrier to that. And I agree with everything that's been said about the professionalism of our teachers recognizing when that communication needs to be initiated on the part of the teacher for the wellness of the child, that that happens in a number of circumstances. And the superintendent has made clear that there is nothing in this procedure that would prevent that phone call from a teacher in a circumstance of a child where gender identity is a related issue that a teacher could pick up the phone and call a parent. I also worry about the other parts of this policy that would conflict, because what taking the "not" out of this paragraph does is remove the preferred name and pronoun option for students. But by federal, state, and case law, we would still have to accommodate that student's bathroom and locker room preference. So in one piece of their life, they're allowed to identify with their gender identity based on the facilities they use, but in another part, they may not be able to use the name and pronouns they choose. And that's a disconnect in the fullness of their identity that this procedure is intended to prevent. So, you had your response.
So, for me, the purpose was more than just an expression of, it was much larger than I think I feel in terms of my own personal viewpoints. It was a culmination of parental input that I'm sure each of us have received. And yet, I'm glad that, and I believe, as a board, we were more deliberate, concise tonight in communicating the actual sense of what this policy is about, what it is and what it isn't, and potentially may alleviate some concerns on the part of some parents and/or tamp down to some degree the fear that parents are being excluded entirely. And so I feel that, and appreciate the fact that my job was not to try to convince anyone to think any differently than perhaps you did initially in your opening statements that each should be provided, but to simply reiterate the importance of parental choice, engagement, and partnership that I've heard reiterated and emphasized here. So I'm, as I'm sure the rest of you prepared to vote.
Any other questions before we vote? On this amendment to strike the word "not" in Section 5B, all those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The motion fails. So we are now back to the original motion, which is to approve the policy recommendations of 413A as they appear in the draft that appears in the Assembly agenda item this evening. Any other comments or questions?
I'm not sure I said this earlier. I appreciate the edits that have been made since the June 11 study session, and I appreciate having them laid out so clearly for me.
You are welcome. Any other questions or comments? Are we ready to take a vote? All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Resolution passes with a voter six to one. Thank you, board members. Item 9.1, Board Questions and Responses. The questions submitted by board members before the meeting and related answers are available in this agenda item. The updated version of the ABCD is also available in this agenda item. Superintendent?
Madam Chair and board members, I, it's a terrible time to do it, but I want to acknowledge our new chief academic officer, Mona Perkins, who is here, joining us for her first meeting. She will be the feature discussant at your next study session, but I wanted to make sure, and I must say, it is not a coincidence that Mona has the last name Perkins from our new activities director at Century High School, though those two hires were totally separate and unrelated. It is very exciting to have both Mona and David here in Rochester, and I didn't want to go to the end of your first meeting without welcoming you. And I know the board is excited to have the chance to meet you, starting at the next study session. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So speaking of a highlight of our next meeting, which is our study session on July 23rd that starts at 5:30 PM, our next regular meeting is August 6th. Please note the different time. It is from 4:00 to 6:00 PM to accommodate the National Night Out. We have a regular meeting on August 20th at 5:30, and another regular meeting on September 10th at 5:30. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:13 PM.